But it's not the budget.
In my opinion, I don't think it's necessary for the state to come in. I have full faith with our current gentleman that does this.
Like I said, I'm bringing this up as I did research it up a downside way. So if there was a great benefit for the city that we put on a hard action plan, that would be a benefit and it's worth the money. But once again, I don't have that answer. Answers I got back is it could be and it could be not.
And then you just basically plain Russian roulette and take a chance and then you're going to get the same information maybe that Dave had given us.
Well, he's been giving it to us for a while.
You might keep that I'm saying without paying the $20,000.
We just got to take action on it and make go by the recommendations that they recommend to us after audit to make those changes. Then one big one was separating the treasurer from the city manager. Not having to put my own position, that's just one favor of it. Just accounting principles, that's always a strong one. To have those positions separated just alleviates any creation of problems. You guys have any other?
No.
What you guys feel?
This would just be to just not have the state come in and audit.
Currently, yes.
It would just be to...
Now, we can ask them to come down the road.
Correct, okay.
I think we got to see what's going on in our fiscal year. We're just under that, you know, our last fiscal year. We're just under a time deadline right now to get it done for end of the year reporting department.
I just can't see spending that kind of money if our current auditor is going to do the same thing in that I guess we thought probably the state would do, like you said, would be more, a lot more than what the current auditor does.
So I make a motion to not have the state...
What is it? Contract with... Cross-janky here.
What he said.
The motion is to enter into an audit agreement.
Audit agreement with cross-janky.
Please and thank you.
And support.
So we have a motion and support to have our audit done by...
Cross-janky.
Yeah, the janky, it's in your somewhere. Do we need a roll call vote on that, Don?
I would appreciate that.
When I have further discussion.
Any further discussion while we're rolling?
We've covered it.
No. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Laporte?
Yes.
Councilman Saha?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quayre?
Yes.
Mayor Protown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on. Letter from Sharon Stahlberg, Supervisor, Pin County Township and Pin County Fire Department Fire Board member, Gibson and Saha.
I just want to bring this up because, you know, we never discussed the letter and the contents. There are some good points in this thing that Supervisor Stahlberg brought up to us and we never discussed it. I guess I hope you have all read the letter and there are good points. So, once again, making ambulance runs, well, we have the ambulance here in town already, cross-training our staff to do that. If they're out on a call, who's paying for it? Police department has an end coverage if they go on that type of call, cover those things. And then if they're out on a call, the township police, if somebody calls 911 in the city, someone's got to respond to it, so who's going to respond? If our staff are out on a call, then that means Sheriff Department of the State Police is going to answer the 911 call for us. This brings up a lot of unanswered questions that we moved into this fast without, I think, thinking about too hard. And there's just a lot of ramifications of moving in that direction. Maybe to be simplified, you know, Joe talked about with the fire department looking at actually full-time fire people staffing the department, that would answer that question. The ambulance run thing also, which is costing the city a lot of money for those that use it heavily, including all their families, properties. You know, this raises a lot of questions. I think we should discuss it at the committee level and see if there are good points for that, all those points made, and then go some.
Again, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I guess I am. Who recommended our police department to be volunteer firefighters without coming to council first for approval?
So, in the past, as we said, Sergeant, or Captain Spencer, but Sergeant at the time, asked me about it. I thought it was a good idea. And we brought it to council in June. He updated council in June saying that they would like to do this and that they had approval from me. Council never spoke on it.
So, again, you top a great area. I'm saying you didn't bring it to our attention, you're saying you did. Why didn't you come back to council and say, because it's a great area, I need your approval or recommendation on whether we can go forward with our police department to be volunteer firefighters instead of it just all of a sudden showing up, getting blown out of proportion, and for six months, this is what we're dealing with. All the issues, all the Facebook posts, everything, negative, negative, negative. You didn't respond to the township and their, what she's seen as one-third of the fire department. A lot of questions was addressed, you didn't respond, as far as I know, to them, addressing them. It just, oh, the Pin County Police are going to be volunteer firefighters, let's go for it. Well, okay, that's where we're going. Now, now they're going to first responders training because of the fire department. First of all, we didn't give them the okay to be volunteer firefighters, but now they're attending first responder classes. On the city's time, our vehicle, they're getting paid for it and in uniform. Who approved that? Do you... It's such a liability. Do you understand that and realize that? And for a fact, yeah, I see a lot of things. Officer Viviana, last Thursday, when you went for training, did you go?
Yes.
What clothes were you in?
White clothes.
Civilian clothes?
That's right.
What vehicle did you take?
Patrol car.
Who okayed that? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but...
I am.
Don't you s... Don't we see a liability there? Somebody in plain clothes driving a police car.
I'll address that.
Same thing as when the meeting, they took the patrol car at Bay City. Who gave the approval? Nobody.
You have something to say, Captain Spencer?
Yes, I've been a police officer since 2003, well before my time. It's very common in all police departments that they take police cars to train. It happens every single day. We don't have to be in our uniform and it'd be unpractical to be in your uniform while you're actually doing training. That doesn't make any sense at all. And we don't, we have a training budget. We go to training all the time. We don't set up the chain of command to go to training. That doesn't make any sense. And a medical first responder class, if you drop over from a heart attack, Mr. Gibson, we're going to show up, we're going to stand over you, and we're going to sit there and do nothing because we don't have that training. Medical first responder training, the fire department besides, that's to help save people's lives. So if we respond to a call, that we already respond to anyway, to answer your question.
Sure, so you're doing your job as a police officer responding to a call, whether you have first responders or not.
But wouldn't you want to be having somebody who knew what they were doing, working on you, rather than somebody who didn't?
If there's an S on I-75, everyone shows up.
It doesn't make a difference.
So if I may answer, the letter that I received from Supervisor Stahlberg, I submitted to council at the last meeting. Council, again, did not direct me to answer it or not answer it. Again, I'm, I tried to be clear.
Did she direct it to council or directed it to you?
It was directed to me.
Well, then...
But it was in our council patents for them to be reviewed. So, could you answer those questions then for, did you send her a response? Does she's been waiting for it?
If you'd like.
Okay, are you waiting on a direction then on the formal written complaint on our officer? Would you, do you need...
What written complaint?
That they have not heard from yet as well, I guess.
Joanne, Joanne Moore?
Yeah.
I responded to that.
Do you need direction from us to proceed with that as well?
I responded to that. That was a FOIA request and a letter complaint. That wasn't asking for information. A FOIA, we have, we are compelled to answer, and the letter complaint was against an officer, which I responded to. This is something different.
I just didn't know if you wanted...
I've responded to all the letters that Ms. Maroon has sent to me.
Okay.
The last one was statements, there was nothing to respond to that I received. I have that with me if you'd like. Because it said, this was back on July 24th. Ms. Maroon wrote to me, "Thank you for your response on the issue I had with Sergeant Spencer at the high school graduation. Obviously, I didn't expect much to happen with harassment physically because it appears the Director of Public Safety, which in definition would be Sergeant Terry Spencer, doesn't report to you, he reports to the city council." So the chain of command at City Hall, it seems, and it trails off, I'm sorry, it didn't print it off, but I sent that on. And our attorney responded, I am not convinced of the writer's argument. It is, it may well address this particular issue if he's talking with our attorney, Rich. But it says that it looks like it was comments and not needing a response. And that was the last communication I had with Ms. Maroon, it was back in July.
I have no question. Moving on, are we done?
Do you want to respond to the letter or not?
Yes, we need to address it. We need to address it.
So...
Questions need to be answered. So long missed the questions.
So how are you going to okay her response? How are we going to at the next meeting?
Well, I, just to move along, I think I deserve a response. And I'd make that motion to have city manager at least respond to the letter, whatever you think, your thoughts, your comments, just respond the way you would. You don't need our...
I will see everyone in the response, how is that?
That's fine, that's fine. So, we're all in?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we need a motion? Do you want a motion now or...
I don't think we need a motion now.
Don, do you agree with that?
No, I just want approval. That's fine.
Moving on, new business. A. Pretty covered that. B, update on status of Pin County Police Department, city manager.
So as I said at the beginning in my report, we were notified late last week that Captain Spencer will be off work for six months. And it's up to council if you wish me to pursue trying to get another part-time person if I do not hear back from Chief Tover. Like I said, I have a letter out to him. I don't know if he will be willing to come back. If he says no, do you want me to explore bringing on another part-time person? And that would come before you, before it was to happen.
I would like to see first, if he does respond to the letter, either email, another letter, telephone call. I would like to at least know that answer in writing from him, his response first.
And then go from there?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree. Yep, that's fine.
Just a question on, is this a workers' comp case?
Yes.
Okay, has work, are workers' comp carrier been notified?
Yes.
And they have responded to kick in the coverage cost and all this, everything's been good?
Correct. They will be paying Captain Spencer during his time off, the city will not.
And they have reviewed the records naturally, a workers' comp case, we as employers...
They have all that, we don't, they have that.
Well, as employers, we have the right to do that in a workers' comp case.
Again, I would have to check with attorney, I...
I would check with them.
I do not know the legality of this.
The HIPAA law, yeah, like you're talking as far as the HIPAA law, correct?
No, HIPAA law is different. HIPAA law prevents...
HIPAA law doesn't protect...
What, I guess, what do you want me to ask workers' comp, what do you want to know?
Usually, you know, the employer, not usually, always will get a report, a medical report on the condition of a person injured on the property or liability and may cause of the employer. You have the rights to all those records. And once again, with job restrictions, when they do come back, all of the reports are mandatory to start a workers' comp case. So if somebody does have all this stuff, and it sounds like the workers' comp carrier does have this stuff, it goes already filed a claim through our workers' comp carrier. So, you know, as far as when you get to the point of the return of work, at that point in time, needs to be certified that...
Right, we would have to release the letter.
...medical provider of our choosing also, that the officer is fit for duty.
Well, you'd have to have it released from his doctor.
Well, not necessarily his doctor, too.
No, it should be our doctor because it happened on property, whatever the city doctor is.
You know, if you want to take their doctor's report, you can, but most employers don't do that, particularly in this type of case, six months off, it's a, you know, a big, big action. And further in the union contract, it does state that fact that we as employers have that right to this information, so.
Brian, do you know, or maybe Don, you can answer, the Family Medical Leave Act, does it allow six months off?
Hi.
I don't think it does, I think it's three, three months, 90 days is the maximum for family medical, that could be wrong. I guess it's something we're going to need to look into.
Yeah, our union contract with POM, Quick Association, EOA, sorry, union contract, which is enforced till 2026, 30, you know, Article 24.4 states, city reserves the right to have a doctor's certification of all illness, illnesses in all occasions, all instances, that's in the contract. So we do have writs of that information. HIPAA laws don't come into this.
This is new for me, so yes, I will make sure with Brian.
But that isn't a new contract, that's why I said you got to look into it.
I want to make sure.
And I wish Officer the best in healing. Well, I'm the guy. Not doing this at that point, I'm directing at you at this point, but, you know, we got to cover our butts as...
They don't let you have that information. The only, they'll, they can, they will give you, they make the, now the patient gets to choose the doctors, not the other way around. But they do, the workers' comp, they do assign you a liaison through the doctor's office, but it's up to the patient.
Well, we can always get that clarified, too. I was told something different by my, perfectly legal profession.
I want to see any of them, so.
We all set with that?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion to amend the MDA, Northern D.A. ambulance contract to, my glasses, I'm getting a little old. Subsection two outline, and half in two per attorney letter dated September 19, 2019. Councilman Gibson.
Again, going back to what?
The very, yeah, the, yeah, the table. Death ordinances, okay. Moving on, DDA staffing contract goals. This would be Councilman Saha and city manager.
So, I apologize, it was just going, I thought it was in the packet when I reviewed, it was not included on there, the contract Brian put forth to the city, and then I also attached our letter from the attorney as to his viewpoints. So, after that...
Make me change it.
Right, I haven't seen an updated contract, and I have a call in to Kevin, but he hasn't gotten back to me.
Well, he will be here Wednesday, so we can discuss that prior to or after.
And again, I know at the last meeting, Brian asked for my opinion on goals or whatever, suggestion. Again, you are the governing body, I think those goals should come from you and not myself.
Well, I was just asking, do these special project council may have, we're making a plan. So we're trying to identify any and all projects, wish list of improvements that can be done in the city. So that was the intention of that question to the city manager, to identify those things. So, once again, we're going to have a pretty large laundry list on Wednesday if anyone wants to show up. Also, actually, Anne's the appointed person for the council will be there, but it's open to everybody, obviously. But if you do have any Pet P projects taking forward, now's the time to incorporate into the DDA plan anyway. Yeah, it's part of that plan, we do fund those type of projects, and we also have a brownsville redevelopment authority, which that falls into automatically, so.
So, again, just once we get that revised contract, I would need council's approval in order to sign that.
That's all I have, so.
Oh, okay. E, city manager employee evaluation, Councilman Gibson.
Can we move, just a point order, just table this till the next meeting? And we got a lot of things on our plate, unless Don wants us to be done, so.
Is that council's discretion?
Should we, should we turn our evaluation in to the...
I have a, I have a, I have a manila folder to put them all in.
Okay. And that's what, I'm new to this part of it, so that's what this would be?
Yes. Which, you know, don't worry, just fill it out and turn it back in. Really, Don?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. But for those that are done, we'll just put them in here.
Yeah, more so like what I did is, oh, crumple, you can go online and see, like, if there's questions you want to ask during the evaluation, but you don't quite know how to ask them. You can go online, MML is a pretty good website for those questions.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
So we need a motion to table this?
I'll make that motion table to the next meeting.
No, support.
So we have a motion and support to table for the next meeting, city manager employee evaluation. Roll call vote, please.
Before we do that, there's discussion, and I guess I, like I say, it's up to the discretion of council, but I guess I'm curious as to why you would not want to do this at this time.
Could you answer that, Mr. Saha, why you feel that needs to be tabled?
Myself personally, I do more evaluation on things that, to give a proper review. I'd spend more time for all of us to give a good evaluation, you know, maybe not better setting that, that we have more time to spend on it would be good, too. So that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. I was just curious. Yeah, it's getting kind of late, I mean, we want to give you a good evaluation and actually take the time for it, not zip through it. So roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Ford?
Yes.
Councilman Saha?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quayre?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
And Mayor Protown, Voucher?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Decision for qualified person to serve as mayor for the balance of the term per Charter Article 11, Section 11.1A. So we need to have a discussion on what we would like to do.
Has there been any written candidates come through the city for application?
We have the one for Chris.
Oh, it's not for mayor.
That's for council.
No, that's for council.
Okay.
At that September 30 meeting, there was no direction on whether to publicize for that position or if that position is going to be filled from within, so to be honest, no.
Well, we have thirty days to fill, which is next week.
Yep.
Well, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Gibson mayor position.
Oh, God.
I'll support.
Let's have a discussion on this.
I need a second.
Rebecca made the motion, you took the second.
How do we all feel about this? I, I personally, with everything that's been going on, it is not a good idea. That's my personal opinion.
That's the problem, I mean, we need to look past the false allegations and rumors and lies.
But still, that is still my opinion, and I'm entitled to my, into my opinion.